All right, well, let's begin with a word prayer. "Gracious God, Heavenly Father, I thank you for not only the hearing, but the reading and the wrestling of your word. Lord, I pray that you would be with us, that your Holy Spirit would guide us. We thank you, Lord, for calling us into faith. We thank you for sustaining us in the faith. And Lord, I thank you that even when we were dead in our trespasses and sins, but God made us alive together with Christ. We thank you so much that God demonstrated his love in this, that while we were yet sinners, Christ died for us. Lord Jesus, I pray that that message and that hope that we have now in Jesus would be the source and sustainer of our hope. We pray in the name of Jesus. Amen. All right, so I asked you to talk a little bit about free will, and we're going to get to that. But I want you to go to, I mean, because chapter 21, 22, other places in the Bible, I mean, we think about these things as chapters that are kind of maybe all by themselves, but they're really continuations of other thoughts. So I want you to go to verse 22. So Revelation 21, verse 22. "And I saw no temple in the city, for its temple is the Lord God, the Almighty and the Lamb; and the city has no need of sun or moon to shine on it, for the glory of God gives it light, and its lamp is the Lamb." So, just a quick question. So in the new heavens and the new earth, is there a sun? S-U-N, thank you. Is there a sun? And if you look at this and you say, "Oh, see, the Bible says there's no sun." Is that exactly what it's saying? There's no need for a sun, okay? All right, so, "for its light and its lamp is the Lamb. By its light will the nations walk, and the kings of the earth will bring their glory unto it; and its gates will never be shut by day." What does that mean? What do gates do? They keep people out. Who are the people that you want to keep out? You know who? The evil people, your enemies, right? "And there will be no night there." Does that mean we don't sleep? Man, I like to sleep. Don't you? Does that mean we're just going to be up all day long for all eternity? That kind of sounds exhausting, right? Is that what the Bible says here? Say again? There you go. Okay. "They will bring into it the glory and the honor of the nations." Verse 27. If you don't have this underlined, underline this in your Bible, or somebody else's Bible. "But nothing unclean will ever enter it, nor anyone who does what is detestable or false, but only those who are written in the Lamb's book of life." So chapter 21 and 22, the section that we're going to hopefully cover today, really are describing what life with Jesus looks like on new heavens and new earth. So we look at things like, oh, there's going to be, you know, we think about, oh, the streets are paved with gold. Are the streets really paved with gold? I don't know. Is there really a pearly gate? I don't know. But the language that is being used here, is there really, you know, is Jerusalem really a perfect cube? Is that what's really going on here? What's happening here is, can you imagine a world that is not like ours? The answer to that is no. I cannot imagine. A friend of mine who was, I went to seminary with, he had this had this great sermon in one of our classes, and it was all about the new heavens and the new earth. And the end of it was about just life with Jesus. And he started off with talking about how good an apple is. And I'll never forget, he said at the very end of his sermon, he said about our life and life with Jesus, and his, kind of his example was, "And we'll all get to taste an apple for the very first time." And I thought, you know, that's kind of a remarkable thing, because have you had good apples and bad apples? The point is, is that no longer will the entire world be fallen. And it'll be like, that's what an apple's really supposed to taste like. You get the idea, right? That all creation is completely done in a way that is like, I don't even recognize it. So the language that is being used here is trying to explain something that is not explainable to us. Because we just cannot imagine it, okay? It's hard to imagine, okay? That's the language that is being used here. I have had people that tell me it sounds boring, but people that say, you know, "I don't really want to go to heaven, because then we're going to be floating on a cloud playing a harp." Right? Or worse, we're going to have to go to church every day? All this is going to be is a non-ending church service? Okay. So, back to, let's go back here. Verse 22 in chapter 21. "And I saw no temple in the city." What day of the week do we go to church in the new heavens and the new earth? We don't! So, if you're thinking, if somebody is thinking that new heavens, and we talked about this before, okay? So, I know most Christians think about dying, go to heaven. And heaven is called the interim state. So when people say to you, "What do you hope heaven's like?" There's a part of me that says, and I think, "I hope it doesn't last very long." Follow me? No? So where's heaven? So, "It's absent the body, present with the Lord." Is that good news? Yes, it is. But we think to ourselves, we talked about this several weeks ago, if you weren't here, go listen to it. But most Christians think to themselves, when their loved one dies and goes to heaven, that the resurrection of the dead has already happened. Friends, that is theologically, it's called gnosticism. So gnosticism, what it believes is, so read the book of Colossians. Paul is speaking to the church in Colossae against gnosticism. Gnosticism believes that flesh is bad. That I've got to get out of here, right? That this body, it's just a rental, so I can abuse it, I can do whatever I want to with it, all of that, right? Why care for the earth? Because it's all going to go away anyway. And what really is going to happen, what's real is what's spiritual, not what's flesh. That's gnosticism. That's not the Bible. Okay? So, what happens is, you are absent the body, present with the Lord. That's a good thing. And there is an awareness there, there is a peace, and there is a joy there, but the resurrection of the dead has not yet happened. Because Jesus has not come back yet. Okay, so in the return of Christ, guess what happens? The resurrection of the dead. That's what the Bible teaches. And what the Bible teaches is not depart this life, take off this fleshy stuff, and go to spirit on a cloud in the sky. It's not what the Bible teaches. What the Bible teaches is new heavens and new earth. That all creation is renewed and restored. So when people say, "Heaven sounds boring to me", that's because they're not reading the Bible. That's because they're thinking, "I'm going to go on a cloud and be an angel and play a harp, and that sounds terrible." Right? That's the point, okay? The new heavens and the new earth are awaiting for you and promised to you in Christ, okay? So, let's talk a little bit about the new heavens and the new earth. So, in the new heavens and the new earth, this is not an exhaustive list, please understand. But in the new heavens and the new earth, and by the way, again, several weeks ago, like the book of Isaiah, the Old Testament, this is not new in the Bible. Like Isaiah talks about this, Ezekiel talks about this, and Revelation is just picking up with what the Bible has taught from Genesis to Revelation, okay? So in the new heavens and the new earth, you will have a new body. So what does that look like? Well, remember what Jesus was able to do? He was the firstborn of all creation, of the new creation, okay? So he is the only one who has ever experienced the resurrection of the dead. Lazarus did not experience the resurrection. How do we know that? Because he died again, okay? So he was revived, but he was not resurrected, okay? So what was Jesus able to do in his resurrected body? Did he eat? Yeah! Was he able to walk through walls? Kind of, if a door was locked and he appeared amongst them, and so, how do you do that? I don't know. Sounds creepy, but again, I mean, he was able to do it, right? So, 1 Corinthians 15 says that you die in what is corruptible, okay? And you're raised to what is incorruptible, okay? So, yes, Matt? It's a great question. I'm going to do my best to answer it very, very quickly, okay? So, so in death, what happens in death? How many of you are in Steven ministry, by the way, or a Steven minister? Okay, so you've heard my spiel before. Okay, in death, to make up a human being is two parts. The body and the spirit, okay? In death, what happens? Those two things are ripped apart. Okay? So if you're a Steven minister, you've heard me teach about ministering to the dying before. I tell you that death is violent. I know we say, "Oh, they died so peacefully," and da-da-da-da. Yeah, that's because they're medicated most of the time, right? So you have this separation, you have this ripping apart of the body and the soul. Okay? What is the resurrection of the dead? It is the unifying or the re-unifying of the body and the soul. You follow me? So your question is, what substance is God using? The same substance that you're made out of. So, you know, if we, I know what this typically does. It typically brings up the question of, "Well, then is cremation okay?" Well, I don't want to get into that, right? But here's what I would say. For somebody to say, you know, they have their loved one, and maybe they're in a casket, right? And you're crying, and you're weeping over your loved one. And somebody comes alongside of you and says, "Don't cry, they're not here any longer." Does that make sense to you? When God knows every hair on their head and knit them together in their mother's womb, to say that that's not, when I see my grandma in a casket, and somebody says, "That's not your grandma anymore." Baloney it's not. God created that body, right? And on the day of the resurrection, guess what he will do? He will raise these bones. So in Genesis, Joseph says what? "Carry my bones to the promised land." Why? Because I believe that God is going to breathe new life into these bones, not some new bones, but these bones. Okay? Does that answer your question? I know there's a lot of questions after that, but it's important in terms of the care for the body, right, that God created, right? That's important. Okay. So we have new bodies, and what does that look like? I don't know. You know, like I'm getting stuff cut off my body, right? Because it's not working anymore. And 2 Corinthians, chapter 4, says, you know, "We're wasting away," right? And everybody says, "Don't you know," right? I mean, it's just, that's what's happening, right? But God then calls us to look to not what we can see, but the things that we cannot see. So I don't know what new bodies look like, ones that don't wear out. I don't know what that looks like, but I trust it by faith, right? Okay? The second thing that we get is that we get new relationships, okay? So, let's just go into chapter 22 here. I want to, we're going to kind of go verse 5, verse, but verse 3 in chapter 22. "No longer will there be anything accursed, but the throne of God and the Lamb will be in it, and his slaves will worship him." So how do we know that they're slaves? Verse 4. "They will see his face," this is relationship, okay? "And his name will be on their foreheads." Everybody seen Toy Story before with Andy written on the bottom of the shoe, right? Andy says, "That's mine," right? So when you have the, the name of God is written on their foreheads, God is saying, "You belong to me." And we are slaves of God. And that's good news. Okay, because in being his slave, his servant, we find freedom. Okay, now those relationships are in this world, in this life. Guess what we do? We have this pecking order. We have all of these, "I'm this, and you're that," or "You're this, and I..." whatever. And we have all of these ways of distinguishing status and all of that stuff, right? And we fight about that all the time, do we not? And, but now, in the new heavens and the new earth, guess what we're all doing? I like this idea, so we'll see if you like it. So it says, "And his servants will worship him." So this is, this word for worship, you can, there's a word that means, like literally, you're prostrate on your face? That's a word for worship? I kind of like this word in Greek. It's the word latroyo. It's where we get the word latrine from. I kind of like that, you know? I like the idea of, you know what, in the new heavens and the new earth, guess what we get to do? Latrine duty. We get to do that, and I kind of like that idea, that we, that there is there is even ground at the foot of the cross. And our relationships are completely new and restored in ways that we can't even fathom. Now, a lot of times, a question comes up, and that is, remember Jesus says in the new heavens and the new earth, "You're neither married or given into marriage," right? So will you know your spouse? I think the answer to that is, of course you will know your spouse. But who, in the new heavens and the new earth, who's your real spouse? The Lord Jesus is, right? And so, so there is this idea of, I think that certainly husbands and wives will know each other, children will know their parents, and so there will be that restored relationship. But it's all about, in the new heavens and the new earth, it's all about the Lord Jesus sustains everything. His presence is the focal point of everything. That's why there's no sun, or there's no need for sun. I mean, it's, without him, there is nothing. Now, again, we would probably say, "Well, that's the way it is right now." Yeah, but through a fallen perspective, right? So, in, so we have new relationships. The other one is that we have new natures. And this is where I want to spend some time on free will, okay? So, what is our nature today? Well, I want us to kind of just feel this. So turn in your Bibles to the book of Romans. So Romans, chapter 7, verse 14. So this describes really every single person who has ever lived. Or, I shouldn't say that. It's, it describes believers, okay? Romans, chapter 7, verse 14. "For we know that the law is spiritual; but I am of the flesh, soul, under sin; for I do not understand my own actions." I just want you to feel the war that is going on in Paul. Same thing with you, and same thing with me. "For I do not understand my own actions; for I do not do what I want, but I do the very thing I hate. Now, if I do what I do not want, I agree with the law, that it is good; so now it is no longer I who do it, but sin that dwells within me; for I know that nothing good dwells in me, that is, in my flesh; for I have the desire to do what is right, but not the ability to carry it out; for I do not do the good I want, but the evil I do not want is what I keep on doing. Now, if I do what I do not want, it is no longer I who do it, but sin that dwells in me. So I find it to be a law, that when I want to do right, evil lies close at hand." Is that not true? "For I delight in the law of God and my inner being, but I see in my members another law waging war against the law of my mind, and making me captive to the law of sin that dwells in my members. Wretched man that I am, who will deliver me from this body of death?" And then typical Paul, he wastes no time to look to Jesus. "Thanks be to God, through Jesus Christ our Lord, so then I myself serve the law of God with my mind, but with my flesh I serve the law of sin." So there is this battle that is going on within each one of you, me included, okay? And there is a part of us that cries out, "I'm sick of it. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of that battle. When will it end?" So let's go back to the revelation, chapter 22. So I have said to you many times during this, during our journey through Revelation, that the story of the scriptures is really, what was lost in Eden is restored in Jesus, okay? So Eden lost is ultimately Eden restored, only it's better. So I want you to check and see here, because there's a lot of, so in 22, especially verses 1 through 5, it's talking about Eden restored. So I want you to think about Genesis, chapter 2, for a second. We're going to go back there. But I want you to see, can you see that there's maybe something missing here? So Revelation 22, verse 1. "Then the angel showed me the river of the water of life, bright as crystal, flowing from the throne of God and of the Lamb, through the middle of the street of the city, also on either side of the river, the tree of life, with its twelve kinds of fruit yielding its fruit each month. The leaves of the tree were for the healing of the nations. No longer will there be anything accursed, but the throne of God and of the Lamb will be in it, and his servants, his slaves, will have latrine duty. They will see his face, and his name will be on their foreheads, and night will be no more; they will need no lamp, they will need no light of lamp or sun; for the Lord God will be their light, and they will reign forever." Anybody, can you see what's missing from what your understanding of Eden is or was? Anybody know what's missing? The tree of the knowledge of good and evil is missing. Yes? Yeah? Yes. So what we're going to do is, I want you to just, I just want you to meditate on it. I'm not going to be able to give you like a one-sentence answer that's going to make you go, "Ah, I get it," you know? Sorry. But it's going to require some deep thought, right? But the tree of the knowledge of good and evil is not in the new heavens and the new earth, okay? So, when will we no longer struggle with what Romans, chapter 7, talks about? In the new heavens and the new earth, right? So, verse 27. "Nothing unclean will ever enter it, nor anyone who does what is detestable or false, but those whose names are written in the book of life." So did God create us as just robots? Nope. So let's go back to Genesis, chapter 2, just to read through this. So Genesis, chapter 2, we're going to start in verse 5. Genesis, chapter 2, verse 5. "So when no bush of the field was yet in the land, and no small plant of the field had yet sprung up; for the Lord God had caused, has not caused, it to reign on the land; and there was no man to work the ground; and a mist was going up from the land, and was watering the whole face of the ground. Then the Lord God formed the man of the dust." I can't even, I don't know. So, a lot of times, what happens is, in Genesis, how does God create? Like, what does he use to create? His words. He says, "Let there be." He did not say, in verse 7, "Then the Lord God said, 'Let there be man.'" What does it mean? That God actually, one author says that God plays in his own dirt. There is a personal involvement that God has in his own creation. That's a wonderful thing. So we're going to see it here again, but God did not speak, and then mankind came into being. He formed very personal relationship, right? So, "Then the Lord God formed the man of the dust from the ground, and breathed into his nostrils the breath of life; and the man became a living creature." Look at this, in verse 8, here he's playing in the dirt again. "And the Lord God planted," getting on his knees, and he's tilling the dirt, and he's putting a seed in the ground, and all of these things. And he planted a garden in Eden, in the east, and there he put a man who he had formed. "And out of the ground the Lord God made to spring up every tree that is pleasant to the sight and for food; and the tree of life was in the midst of the garden, and the tree of the knowledge of good and evil." Okay, so so the tree of the knowledge of good and evil is not in the new heavens and the new earth. And how do we understand that? So how do we understand this idea of free will? Well, there's probably multiple ways that you can think about it. But I think that there's three primary ways. And I'm just going to quickly share them with you. So the picture of these three people, on the left, you have Augustine, St. Augustine, on the left. In the middle, you know who that is? Anybody know? That's John Calvin, and on the right, I hope you all know who that is. So, Dr. Martin Luther, okay? So, yeah, the OG, right? There you go. But Augustine, I mean, he's 1,200 years before Luther, right? And so, but these are really the three, I think, primary thoughts in the church in terms of man and choice and free will. And so, here's what Augustine says. Augustine teaches that man is born without sin. So you're a baby, you're born, you don't have any sin, okay? "And possesses a desire to please God and do his will, but instead chooses the sin, and is therefore fallen." So, a person is born without sin, but because their sinful desire, they choose to go against God, okay? And every single person has done that, okay? And every single person has, has done that, okay? Nevertheless, even as people continue to choose to sin, they retain what he calls a spark. So there is a, they retain a spark that desires to do the will of God. Therefore, what, what's the purpose of the church and the sacraments? The sacraments of the church are for the purpose of stoking that spark so that people can cooperate with God. Okay, so this is, this is, this is, if you're Roman Catholic, this is, this is pretty much what, what Roman Catholics believe, right? Is that you're, you're, you're not, you're born, um, you're born not sinful. You, you probably by, you know, within a year or whatever, you sin and you fall. And, uh, and then, but then you have this spark that says, yeah, but I, but I have this in me that I want to serve and please and do God's will. Now granted, it might only be a spark, right? But your, but your sinfulness kind of overwhelms that, right? So now you gotta come and you gotta do all of the different sacraments of the church that then kind of stoke that spark and kind of, uh, kind of, uh, tamp down your sinful desire, okay? So that's Augustine. John Calvin comes along and he says, nah, I don't think, I don't think Augustine's right. So what John Calvin says essentially is you have no choice. Uh, you don't choose. God alone chooses. Uh, so if you are a full-blown Calvinist, uh, one of the most important things is the sovereignty of God. In other words, God is in charge and you're not. And so God picks who He's gonna pick, and you, what's your role? Just shut up. Uh, that's pretty much it, okay? So here's what Calvin says, "As a result of the falling of sin, mankind is born sinful. Therefore, we have no choice. Instead, on the account of the sovereignty of God, He chooses those whom He will save." God also chooses those who will not be saved. So that's called double predestination. So there's single predestination, there's double predestination. So single predestination is this idea of God chooses those to save. Double predestination says He also chooses people not to save and to damn to hell for all eternity. That's Calvinism, okay? So many of you've probably heard of, of five-point Calvinism, which is the tulip. So you have total depravity. So that's kind of your original sin. Uh, unconditional election, that, that's where God chooses whom, whom He will choose. Then you have the L, which is limited atonement. What does that mean? It means that Jesus only died for the elect. Okay, so, so can you, so, um, anybody know who D. James Kennedy is? Anybody heard that name before? So he was in the seventies and the eighties, early nineties. I mean, he was the author of, of evangelism, uh, most probably popular, well-known evangelism course called Evangelism Explosion. So he was a Calvinist. So from a Calvinist perspective, uh, you kinda wonder, well, why would we be going, if, if Jesus only died for the elect? Well, uh, how do we, how do you do evangelism then? Well, the point is, is that, is that to a Calvinist, you would just say, well, we don't know who's elect and who's not, so just tell everybody about Jesus. But they would not say that Jesus died for all people. Okay, they would not say that. They would say that, nope, Jesus only died for the elect. The other one, I, is irresistible grace. And then, and then P is the perseverance of the saints, okay? So again, sovereignty of God, uh, you have no choice. Uh, God elects you, that's it. Um, uh, it's good to be you, and it's not good to be somebody else who's not the elect. Kinda the idea, alright? So then come, comes along, comes Luther. And Luther kinda says something a little different. He says, nah, Augustine, you're wrong. That's not the way it is. And Calvin, you're not right either. Um, so this is what Luther says. He, he says, "After the fall, uh, we fell into spiritual death." So no part of us desires to love or to cooperate with God. In fact, we are actually, uh, Ephesians two calls us enemies of God. There's no part of, of you that says, I want to do God, God's will to please Him or to love Him. In fact, everything in me says I, I wanna do the opposite, okay? So, um, so then for Luther, "In my deadness, do I have free will? I have the free will to reject, do I have the free will to reject God? Yes. Do I have the free will to cooperate with God or to come to Him? No." Okay? So, uh, one of the things that I just, I love about Luther is he's so honest. And, um, there is a, um, there's a senator, I won't tell you what his name is, but, uh, there's a senator that I, I like to listen to once in a while. And he says this. He says, "When I get up at eight o'clock in the morning, I wanna follow Jesus. By ten o'clock, I still wanna follow Jesus, but I also wanna slap somebody." Right? I don't know if this guy's Lutheran, but that's Lutheran. There is this, there is this battle saying, I know, God, I know what you want me to do, but my neighbor is really ticking me off, right? So you've probably heard this too before. So, so in baptism, we've talked about it before. We've talked about it as a death and resurrection, right? And we talk about it as in baptism, your old Adam is drowned and you come to new life in Christ in baptism, yes? That, and there's many theologians who have said over the years, but boy, is your old Adam a good swimmer. Cause he raises his head up all the time. And he, he has a really good way of holding his breath and, and raising his head up at the wrong time. Is that not our lives? It's, it's what, what, uh, Paul describes in, in, uh, in Romans, uh, chapter seven. So again, here's the thing, you good Lutherans, you should know this. So let's read this together. Can you see that? Okay, so this is the third article of the Apostles' Creed. It's in your, it's in your small catechism that you ever read for, forever, okay? So let's read this together. "I believe that I cannot by my own reason or strength believe in Jesus Christ my Lord or come to Him. But the Holy Spirit has called me by the gospel, enlightened me with His gifts, sanctified and kept me in the faith, in the same way He calls, gathers, enlightens the whole Christian church on earth and keeps it with Jesus Christ in the one true faith. In this Christian church, He daily and richly forgives all my sins and the sins of all believers. On the last day, He will raise me and all the dead and give eternal life to me and all believers in Christ." And if you're a real good Lutheran, you will say, there we go. This is most certainly true, okay? Now, so what is Luther saying here? What, what he's saying here is, uh, can, i- in Ephesians two, "I am dead in my sins and trespasses." I'm a, I'm as dead as a doornail. What can a dead person do to come to faith in Jesus? You cannot do it. However, do you have the, has God given you, uh, maybe you call it free will, the choice to reject Him? The answer to that is yes. Do you have the ability to accept Him, come to Him, believe in Him, apart from Him? No, okay? So, uh, if we go back to, uh, Augustine, you know, a lot of these things, they kinda, well, is that, is it that? Is it, is it, are we, are we talking about Calvin? Are we talking about Luther? Uh, really important because I, I would say the Bible certainly shares with us that, uh, that we have that freedom of choice. We have the freedom to reject. Do I have the freedom as a, as a, as a dead person to make myself alive? I don't have the freedom to do that. I can't do that. Only the Holy Spirit who enlighten, enlightens me by the gospel, right? That's the point, okay? All right. Absolutely, yes. Yes. Um, yeah, and I, yes. Uh, so let's go back to total depravity. There's, there's a sense of, of saying, okay, we agree, we would agree. Scripture would agree that, that we are, we are dead in our trespasses and sins. We have a, a sin nature that is, that, that there's original sin, okay? Unconditional election. So again, this would be, so, so let me ask you this. Do, do Lutherans believe in predestination? Come on. Um, Lutherans do believe in predestination. Okay, so Romans eight, "Those He predestined," right? Uh, so again, um, God does, does He, does He choose and does He, but He also said, it also says that, "For God so loved the world," right? Uh, so there is a tension that we have to deal with, uh, as good Bible believing Christians and good theologians. You're all theologians, by the way. Um, there is what's called objective and subjective justification. What's objective mean? Jesus died for the whole world. Does that then mean that all people are saved? No, that's the subjective part, right? So then why some, not others? So, so there is, God has given to them a, a, a choice to reject, okay? All right. How much time we got? One minute, okay, good. Okay, let's, uh, I want to, um, just leave you with this. Um, let's see here, which one do I wanna talk about? Um, okay, I'll leave you with this. So just thinking about the new heavens and the new earth, okay? So Revelation, chapter 22, verse two. "So through the middle of the street of the city, also on either side of the river, the tree of life, with its twelve kinds of fruit yielding its fruit each month." So one of my favorite stories in the Bible, um, I just love it, is, uh, is in Mark's gospel. So Mark, chapter 11. And let me tell you the verse here real quick. Verse 12. So Mark, chapter 11, verse 12. So I want you to, I want you to imagine that you are one of the disciples, okay? Mark, chapter 11, verse 12. "On the following day, when they came from Bethany, he was hungry. Jesus was hungry. And seeing in the distance a fig tree in leaf, he went to see if he could find anything on it. When he came to it, he found nothing but leaves, for it was not the season for figs. And he said to it, 'May no one ever eat fruit from you again.'" And his disciples heard. So you're the disciples. Jesus comes to a fig tree that the fig, figs aren't in season. And Jesus says, "Cursed be you." And you're the disciples and you're like, that's not very nice. What did that tree ever do to you? You follow me? Yeah, yeah, you're just, he's got the, he's hangry, right? Here's the point. What did God, why did God create a fig tree? To produce figs. So, um, I think about this in the, in the new heavens and the new earth. So if you go back to Revelation 22, um, "The tree of life with its twelve kinds of fruit yielding its fruit each month." There isn't, so can you imagine? You go up to a fig tree, every time you go up to a fig tree, it's got the most ripe figs on it. And then you eat as, to your heart's content, and then guess what happens? There's more. And then there's more, and then there's more. So I love the story of Mark, chapter, in Mark, chapter 11, because here, I think Jesus is looking at, he's looking at this just like he's looking at death, just like he's looking at all of these things. And he's like, man, I cannot wait for the, uh, for the new heavens and the new earth, right? When you walk up to a fig tree and there's figs on it when you're hungry. Does that make sense, right? And, uh, or like my buddy talks about, you know, you walk up to an apple tree, uh, and there's apples on it, and they're perfect every single time. And there's not like half of the ones that you wish you could have eaten, they're fallen on the ground, right? And those are the rotten ones, right? No, 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 no rotten ones on the ground. They're all on the tree and it produces its fruit all the time, and it's perfect every time. Can you imagine a world like that? I, I can't, I can't. So anyway, all right, let's, uh, let's close in prayer. Heavenly Father, I thank you for Jesus. I thank you that in Him we have this hope, uh, hope that, um, we get to look forward to, what does it mean to live in perfect and restored relationship with you? Oh, Lord, I cannot wait. Uh, but Lord, you have this day a purpose for us. You have a calling upon us to share the excellencies of Him who brought you out of darkness and, and brought you into His glorious light. And Lord, we have opportunity to invite others to what this marriage feast of the Lamb and His kingdom looks like and is like. And it is not a forever worship service and going to church every day. It's not on a cloud with a harp. It is restored relationships, new bodies, and perfect relationship with you. Father, help us to have great hope in that and also invite others to come to faith in Jesus, to know Jesus as Lord and Savior. We pray in His name, amen. All right, God bless you all and we'll see you next week. Hey, by the way, everybody, um, so next week is the very last week of Revelation. So thank you for hanging with me, uh, for several months and, uh, look forward to wrapping up Revelation next week.